Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order. This public meeting for Johnson County Commissioners on this twelfth day of July two thousand twenty-one at ten o'clock AM. Please pray with us if you care to, and then we'll stand with the flag of allegiance.
Lord, may your heavenly Father, who comes through your gracious hearts for the blessings you bestow on us each and every day. Hey, Lord, we have some people here today who want to speak to us about suicides that are occurring in our community and across our nation. Lord, I just pray that you would be with any individual who's feeling alone in this world, will let them know that you're there to comfort and guide them, that their life is worth living. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
The citizens of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains on a nation under God, indivisible, for creating justice for all.
Introduction of Mr. Zaresi?
That's correct.
Zaresi.
I've heard it pronounced any different way, so. Probably well. Thank you, my name is Scott Zaresi. I'm the new outreach representative for Attorney General Todd Riquetta. He has increased the office staff of the Outreach Division and also mission as to what we're doing. One of the things that I think is that the people don't always know what the General Office does, and he would like for us to have a little bit more visual presence in the counties and to be able to make connections with such as yourself and other clubs and cities and towns. And I'm sure that probably what most people think about the Attorney General Office is represents Indiana in court. There are many other kinds of visions and things that the Attorney General does that we'd like to be able to have a more active role in counties. We do have a consumer protection division where we look out for people for scams and things like that. I had someone that I met a few weeks ago. Her sister got a phone call from someone who she gave her social security number to. It was not a good idea to be able to do that over the phone, but she asked us what can she do to help protect her. We also have unclaimed property division where the Attorney General's Office returns over one million dollars every week to Hoosiers and unclaimed property. I myself, when I started a couple of months ago, looked on there and found on our website that I had four hundred dollars in unclaimed property. So I encourage everyone to visit our website and look for at our unclaimed property division. We also do services to elected officials such as yourself. We have an advisory board. Just July first, we started a whole bunch of new state laws that are legislature legislative works passed. We can offer opinions if there's any clarification on certain law that has been passed. We will, through your legislature, request a advisory opinion on what that new law or section means and how it applies to you. So if you ever have a question like that, we can certainly do that. We also have a real estate division that would give advisor advisories advisory opinions on things concerning our real estate. So we have a lot of different ways that we can help the community. And so I'm just here today to answer any questions if you have them, but also to be making an initial introduction on behalf of the Attorney General.
Just out of curiosity, only four hundred dollars. And I see they have lists occasionally that will publish it. Is that tax refund or inheritance or money once?
I've gotten some refunds from my car insurance for not having accidents. I don't know what happened with the communication with them, but apparently I had not been claiming it for many years. And so I got like fifty dollars a year or something, so it added up a hundred dollars.
They have paid that money to the state?
Yeah, it goes to the state as an unclaimed property.
Thank you for your time today.
Other than regarding achievements on wages and things that you were like directly with the DWD, do you have any jurisdiction over the DWD? I'll be there. They're a mess. I just got a letter that they're going to garnish my wages for unemployment that I didn't receive. And I can't seem to get anybody to respond or talk to me, or it's the biggest screwed up mess I've ever seen in my life. I just want to make that public today.
Well, I am happy to reach out to the government's office and people that I know in there and try to get somebody to be able to do that.
Yeah, been playing for fraud, but I can't seem to get fraud department to work with me or anything other than just send me nasty letters.
I will do what I can to try.
I appreciate that greatly. I'll try just about everything I know. I appreciate that, sir. I'm good. Thank you very much for coming in to see us today. Sorry. I gotta be in somewhere. Oh, no, I'm sorry, suicide prevention. Check that off Coalition of Johnson County. This is, I think, maybe two-fold to give us a little bit of enough data or report, and then also the request for the signs on the county. For how long was it done?
Well, I don't know about the first part, but I'm gonna talk about the bigger part. I can tell you whatever you want to know, though.
No, whatever you're here for.
Okay, my name is Hope Tox, and I'm on the Suicide Prevention of Johnson County Coalition, which also falls under upstream prevention. In case anyone is not aware of that. But September is Suicide Prevention Month, and we're always looking for different ways to bring awareness. And we're hoping to have yard signs, standard size, your twenty-four by eighteen standard size yard signs on the courthouse lawn facing Jefferson with information about education, hopeful statements, resources such as the Suicide Prevention Lifeline Number, Crisis Text Number, other mental health resources available, information about what people can do if they see a warning sign to somebody to help someone. So those kinds of things. In terms of data, we were looking at including something to recognize the lives lost in Johnson County for twenty twenty, but we weren't looking to have a whole bunch of numbers and data out there, more hopeful statements, resources, education, on things people can do to help each other, that sort of thing. We're awaiting data from the state to see what the final number was for twenty twenty, but we would like to have a yard sign for every life lost. So I would say no more than twenty-five yard signs that we'd be talking about. And the colors are other suicide prevention colors are teal and purple. So they would be kind of alternating teal, purple signs with that information.
Are you talking just one sign at a time in twenty-five different variations, or are we talking twenty-five signs at one time?
At one time, but different signs. So, you know, one sign might be a helpful statement, another sign might be a resource, and then another sign might be some education, that sort of thing. I mean, we could go and do, I just thought I'd just look at it. But yeah, I just want it to be positioned where people walking the sidewalks would be able to, you know, stop greet them if they chose to.
Well, I'm hopeful whatever you can do with suicide. Another way that those signs might be helpful is along that area. That's an awful lot of signs across here. Here's what happens typically. I like reading, you know. You can read a paragraph and probably grasp, but you get something out of it three pages long. About midway through the second page, you forget what that first paragraph was. And I think you might be over timing there. A couple of key signs with pertinent information. It's probably serve your purpose better than other things.
And that's, yeah, and people would take whatever we can get. We were just trying to think of, you know, having a sign for each life lost, but we're not going to have information about the person on each sign or anything like that. So I mean, if it's ten times, we'll take ten times. If it's twelve, we'll take twelve. Whatever we can do.
If I don't cover the number of people lost.
Well, for Johnson County, I think it would.
Not sure. It's just astounding that the number of suicides we represent every month. I don't know. Like some signs, but I'm not sure.
I mean, I know we get a lot of crosses without, I mean, probably a hundred crosses without crossing the lawn. If she's wanting to follow the sidewalks, I mean, we've got upfront sidewalks, we've got all the grand sidewalks, we want to get inside the building. If she wanted to put those, someone wanted to do a walk, or do, I guess, that would be more or less what it would be. I don't think twenty-five signs on either side of that would take up. I think there's plenty where, if it doesn't, you can see twenty-five.
You're talking coming up the sidewalks.
Just line the sidewalks. I mean, if that's okay, I think, you know, law care and all that, that has to work.
How long do you plan on leaving the signs up?
Well, Suicide Prevention Awareness Month is the whole month of September, so if you could do that, great. If not, the first two weeks of September.
Another problem, Jason?
I mean, I'm good with it. I mean, I would try to, I hate to say this, but I mean, keep it to a minimum of twenty-five. I mean, if you're trying, I mean, I don't know what that number is. I don't think you do right now with the total number of suicides in Johnson County or in this town.
Well, for twenty twenty, it was as of March, but I don't know that they've all been reported, but as of March, it was twenty-two at that time.
And I'm not putting a number on it because of that, but I think if you get twenty-five messages out, I think that would be. Or you need more. Two weeks, two hundred. Is two weeks fine, or are you okay with two weeks?
That's fine.
And you can hold those things to be September one.
Yeah, we do the first to the fourteenth, first two weeks.
So. They're gonna have a lot of walking through that. I would give my motion.
I have a motion in a second for the forty-five signs from September first through September fourteenth. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say in a public saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your effort.
Clerk, just approval of Harold J. Hesch and Sons. I have a motion in a second, any further?
Thanks for showing up, Trey.
Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose, motion carries. Prosecutor title, U V dash D Best Practice Workshop, we come familiar with, and I know Amy's here. And then also the Nova Conference.
Good morning. Two items are both under travel and training. And the first item is for child support. We've got ten full-time child support workers, we're only sending two to this conference. And breakfast and lunch will be provided by the conference. So we're asking for two hotel nights and two evening meals. And sixty-six, since it's a hundred percent child support, it's reimbursable by sixty-six percent. Amy Davis, Prosecutor's Office.
Yes, sir. Yeah, a motion in a second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Our Nova Conference is a hundred percent paid for by our focus grant, and we're sending two of our victim advocates this year.
Send motion second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Amy, just to save you time, next time, if anything that's paid for by a hundred percent grant, if you want to just give me an email on that.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Just to save you some time.
Okay, thank you much.
Thank you. Oh, you do? Planning and zoning, approval of Hickory Estates, won't pass surface overlay and repair pending legal.
For the record, I'm Richard Hoover, planning and zoning, planning engineer. Hickory Estates was constructed back in the two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and there was a bond that was given to the county to take care of anything that might have not been taken care of at the time. The alleyways, how, in the, first off, Hickory Estates is a gated community and everything is privately owned. The county is in charge of the bond, means that at some point we're going to need to enter into a contract with the contractor that's going to come in and apply surface to the alleyways that was never done. There's some repair items and removal of pollards that are included in this. The total amount that we're going with with the bond, and I contacted the contractor. I make sure the price that he'd given us in March is good. He's verbally told me yes, he's going to send me an email follow-up. Unfortunately, he's down with COVID at this time. He's there about day six of it. So when he's fully recovered from that, he's going to send me. What we're doing here today is we're here to, I guess, get an approval of the general lease. Or the amount is twenty-six thousand, four hundred and five dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars, something like that. And just pending all of the legal items need to be done as far as the contract and actually getting the verbal okay that the price is decided.
I'm somewhat familiar with that. I can't, John, I can't think of his last name right now. He's in the lumber business, I believe, there. And I was working with him a couple of years on this and when Allen was still here. And I thought we had some resolution from the original contractor, but apparently according to this, no.
No, this is something that Allen started probably two, two years ago, and then getting response from the bonding company took quite a while. They actually gave us a general lease for five hundred dollars last, last fall, but by the time they got it to us, it was actually in November, and I wasn't going to let them proceed with the flying asphalt pavement that they did here.
I guess we need a motion, or we need to do this with legal first, or how?
I have a motion in a second to approve pending legal, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Approval of stormwater easement, for sure, real well.
This year, Sugar Grove Elementary is, has provided us with plans for a twenty-nine thousand square foot addition. We're going to degrade for, the plans themselves are approved pending the information, or pending a, I guess, drainage easement, a permanent drainage easement. The drainage easement that was out there prior was a temporary one, and it was for the benefit of Foxberry Trace Plant Unit Development, and it was something that was required by Johnson County at the time. Them not knowing how that property that it was crossing, which is now Sugar Grove Elementary. It was a temporary easement. The storm sewer that they put in didn't really fall within that easement, but nothing was ever done as far as getting it into a permanent easement, which I guess is okay, because it's now a deal. The easement that we have requested includes where the new pipe or the relocated sewer is going, and it's going to include the detention area, the entire detention area that's located along the south side of Smith Valley. Sugar Grove Elementary is at the southwest corner of Berry Smith Valley. It's already been through legal, and I think everything is okay with legal. And so we're just wanting at this point to execute this easement.
I got a question on this one. So. I'm assuming we're trapped in the water coming under Berry Road, and we're gonna take it down into this. Two point six five two acre area is what it was designed to be?
Yes.
That subdivision that's just west of the school property, I've been out there a number of times, and those people that, that water sheet flows across that farm field, they're basically going to have corn, and all of their street drains get flooded up over there with the corn stalks. So I'm just wondering, is there any way that get some of that water and take it into this, or is that possible?
Let's, we're talking about property to the west of?
Yeah, to the west of the school would be a little bit southwest of the school. You know that farm field there?
Right.
Comes in, and all that water sheet goes off of that farm field into that neighborhood. This water that you're depicting here is coming under Berry Road, so it's coming out of Fox?
It's coming out of Foxberry Trace. Under Berry Trace, underneath the, it's going through our detention system, and that is outletted north, to the north of Smith Valley. The property that you're talking about, I don't even believe drains back towards the school, and it's not really part of the, I guess, it's not really the school's responsibility to try and fix somebody else's problem.
Yeah, I understand. I was just trying to think of a way with it, maybe a little too worded at once, don't know.
I don't, I don't think it's, I can look in to see if there's something that might be done, but it, you know, just from what I know of the project and what we, as far as we view is that.
So this line doesn't exist right now?
There's an existing storm sewer that's going to be removed with the expansion. And we have to, you can't put a building over top of an existing storm sewer, even if it's temporary. And since there was an existing easement, drainage easement that benefited or was given to the county, we're replacing that with a permanent easement.
I have a motion in a second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Are you liking this signature?
Twenty dollars on the counter, we'll sign.
I need brains.
Yeah. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one, and there's a number changer, dash Z dash two.
Good morning. Michelle, answer director, planning and zoning. We had a petition that was filed by Speedway LLC to rezonate a portion of our property at sixty-one zero zero west of Smith Valley Road Greenwood. It is at Smith Mallie and currently State Road thirty-seven, which will be the new I sixty-nine, and also the interchange right there. They are requesting to rezonate a portion of their property, which is one point eight four acres from our two residential residential to B one. Speedway currently has a gas station there on the southern portion, which is already zoned, B two, B one, and they want to request rezonate the remaining of their parcel. They are going to write away acquisition with the state and the county that is not included with this one point eight four description of land, but they want to rezonate it to be Assistant B one zoning district for the redevelopment of that gas station. The State Commission heard it in June and July, and made available recommendation on July eighth with anonymous documents.
I suspect you're familiar with this, Commissioner, since you said it's your duties.
I'm really familiar with it. And I'm willing to make a motion to approve, but before I do, I don't know if the gentleman from Speedway would want to say anything, but I can tell you from what they presented at planning and zoning permission that this would really be a nice enhancement to that area, given what the current facility looks like and how it's situated. And we've pretty much got assurance from them, that's what they're going to use this for. Because there was concern about, you know, if we rezonate, would you try to do something else? Given what they're going to have to do, they pretty much have the interstate, but that interchange here is, it changed with their plan to. And then with the extension of Mollamix Road, it gives them that, that access on the Mollamix. It's done, it's into the roundabout, which will get you back onto the interstate if you're planning to go in that direction, so. And they did a nice job in their presentation, as we kind of jerked them around a little bit. I think they actually, I thought they were very cordial in their presentation. If you're familiar with that area right now, and that particular station, it's one of the older models, and they want to upgrade it. If you look on your slides, you'll see that the one artist rendering of the layout, and what they're proposing is, I think, eight islands that are single islands, so you don't have double stack cars, and that would expedite them through there and give them plenty of room to make turns. There was some concern about people following trailer for that. So they've thought over that. Let's hope the gentleman has something they want to add, and I'm prepared to move to approve.
Sir, I have a motion in a second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Highway. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one, that we wrote, and?
Good morning. Good afternoon, Highway Director. Yes, this is the second reading of the ordinance that at the last meeting, we had the first reading on. This is temporarily prohibited for traffic along the southern county road that are being used during the Taylor forty-four.
So we got a question for you. We've got signage out there now, right?
On the, on the north side, yes, that was the previous ordinance.
Yeah, so there are no signage on the south, this route here?
We have the sign posts put up, and we'll be putting the signs up today once we approve.
I didn't know if you could put the signs up before the ordinance or not. At least give them direction, you know, without the, right of, because I was going to go from there, well, how's that work? And it was working good, do we really need it? Anyway. Well, but I might, no, he could put directional signs out, or nature signs, or whatever, without the, no, the. the ability of the ordinance.
So the signs that we're installing are the no truck, regular course sign as part of the sort. Indoc had already added additional signage, both in Franklin and Shelby County, to help further inform trucks not to come in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
I'm moved to approve.
I don't like them, but I'll say.
Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Vote. Motion carries.
I'll give you this, I'll just talk to this gentleman this morning. Give you his information here.
You did get my text, that's understood there.
Yes. We won't do anything.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's the concern, because there'll be a lot of stuff moving now. The traffic will start on Friday. You did. I know there's a lot of traffic in there moving in and out.
Ronnie, I have a question about where we stand with Speedway parcel. The, the claim that is here is for an early access right of entry. Right now, in that area, both the acquisition of what will be the future Mollumx Road driveway and the utility easement for I-69 are holding that project up. So we negotiated with Speedway to get early access to the property before the Court Appraisals actually came in, so that we wouldn't be holding Indoc up any longer. The Court Appraisals did come in this week. So we're at the point, we're going to deposit the money with the court this week, and then there should be no issues with any utility relocation work that's happened.
I was kind of hopeful that you, that whole thing would settle.
And I think we're pretty much done at this point.
Thanks, Luke. And for commissioners, approval for the elected officials, 2021, AIC, travel. Motion second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Claims. New business, I'm sorry.
I think I worked on, I thought I worked this up on, I don't want to be sure, express 257. That's for the sheriff, Doug, and I always look forward to his explanations. And it's kind of under probation. They had two charges with him, health services, one for $1,546, and the other $47.01. And I did notice in Superior Court, too, he had an erosion on the same company. There's only a hundred and something. I'm just curious, what kind of health service would be providing probation out?
Mental would probably be, mental health. That would be my guess.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how that would be applied. So anyway, that's, that's the only thing that I learned on crime. You're going to have to move to approve.
Have a motion second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Commissioners, minutes, and what will be one added under seat, regular meeting 622, 2021, 628, 2021, special meeting 628, 2021, and joint council commissioner minutes 624, 2021. We have a few occasionally.
Say.
Then motion second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose. Motion carries. No, under new business, also.
One is on the jail. We have mattresses that we purchased. It's like a $3,000 item. And I basically took anything out of the norm that was not on. It's in contingency. It's not an additional add as well within the budget, but $40,000 for actresses, I just want to. It's, I don't think it's getting absolutely, it's worth $40,000. So you guys are good with that, and move before we have a contingency.
Have a motion. I'll second it. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose.
And the second one is now. To ask permission to approach council tonight, we have, I've got a possible contractor in front of us, but I need to get some money ready. We had $1.6 million set aside for the jail, for the initial onset, before the bond got set. Now, bond sets are on mass, it's $525,800 is what I'm asking council for. And it is for a 40% preliminary environmental, which is the value record to start on that, because we have the opportunity now. I don't want to double down on the residents by doing 69. And we get a lot of preliminary stuff done now. And this is what that's. Those are approved. I guess the second one.
Have a motion in a second. Further discussion, I just want to understand, this is money that's already been previously encumbered, it's not added, it's not ready, it's transferred. These money is already encumbered and we're transferring them. Just so we don't get anybody nervous. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose. Motion carries.
Move to the term.
That was just public comment. Seeing that?
No.
Now I'm moving to a term.
Have a motion second. We're here. Thank you.